Good evening. I will now call the regular Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, May 21, 2024 to order, and we'll call the roll.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Chair Klein.
Present.
Vice Chair Rudin.
Here.
Commissioner Fortney.
Here.
Commissioner Pargas.
Here.
Commissioner Lightfoot.
Here.
Commissioner Banta.
Here.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I will now ask Commissioner Fortney to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Fortney.
Thank you, Chair.
So, it's my distinct pleasure to welcome Commissioner Designate Beaumont and to be able to be here for him to be the newly appointed Commissioner to please stand for your swearing-in. I'll ask City Clerk Thornburg to administer the oath of office.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
State your name.
Doug Beaumont.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter. Thank you again. Can I put this up here now?
In a time like the present, welcome home.
Thank you. Good to be back.
Would you like to say anything?
I'd just like to say it's an honor and a privilege to be up here with you six other people representing the citizens of Vacaville and doing what's best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, this evening, we have the election for Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission for 2024 to 2025. We will first nominate and elect a Chair, then do the same for Vice Chair. Following the nominations, we will take a brief break to shuffle seats. I will now open the floor for discussion among my fellow Commissioners on nominating a Chair, and then we'll entertain a motion. I'll now take nominations for Chair.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you to Chair Klein for all the work that he's done. Over the last year, it's been wonderful working with you. I would like to make a motion to elect Vice Chair Rudin as the Chair and Ralph Lightfoot as the Vice Chair.
Well, now, we're just doing Chair.
Okay. Then, I'd like to make a motion to elect Vice Chair Amanda Rudin as Chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to reelect Brandon Klein as Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lightfoot. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Okay. We will close nominations for Chair and deliberate the nominations accordingly. Would anyone like to make remarks? Okay. We'll close that portion, and I now will ask for a motion to move forward the nomination for...
So, I make a motion for Commissioner Rudin as Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor of Commissioner Banta? Please raise your hand. Sorry. Yes. Mr. Fortney.
No, I said, was it Commissioner Rudin?
Sorry, did I say Banta?
Yeah.
Excuse me. Commissioner Rudin, please raise your hand. Okay. Well, with that, congratulations, Commissioner Chair Banta. Sorry, Rudin. Obviously, I've been in this job a little too long. Congratulations, Chair Rudin. We will take a break and reshuffle.
Vice Chair, yeah. Vice Chair first.
Vice Chair, yeah, Chair first. All right, we're going to come back to our meeting. Please give me a little grace, being my first time as Chair. Okay, we are moving on to Item 5, Communications. We will now move on with regular business, starting with communications. At this time, I will ask Director Morris if there are any communications or announcements for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Chair Rudin. We don't have any announcements. I did want to note that we've received eight pieces of communication regarding the digital billboards item, seven of which were transmitted to the Commission ahead of the meeting and made available on the website, and the last of which is on the dais for each of you. And that's all I had.
Great, thank you. And now we will move on to the approval of this evening's agenda. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fortney, a second from Commissioner Vargas. Thank you. And Nancy, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Klein?
Yes.
Commissioner Fortney?
Yes.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yes.
Commissioner Banta?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaumont? Vice Chair Lightfoot?
Yes.
Chair Rudin?
Yes, sorry, trying to keep up with the microphones. Okay, business from the floor. Next item is business from the floor. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue that is not on the agenda. There will be a limit of three minutes per speaker. And I welcome anyone who wishes to address the Commission regarding a topic or issue that is not on the agenda this evening to please approach the podium. Okay, we don't have any public comment. Moving on to consent calendar. Now is time for the consent calendar. We have one item on consent, which is amendments from the March 19, 2024 meeting. Does anyone from the Commission or the public wish to pull the consent item for discussion? No? All right, do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Klein, second by Commissioner Banta. Nancy, can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Klein?
Yes.
Commissioner Fortney?
Yes.
Commissioner Vargas?
Same.
Commissioner Banta?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaumont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lightfoot?
Yes.
Chair Rudin?
Right, now we are on to public hearing. We will move on to public hearing this evening, which is to receive a presentation on digital freeway billboards zoning text amendments. We will first hear a presentation by staff, followed by Commissioner questions, and then we will open it up for public comment. May we please have the staff presentation?
Yes, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners and members of the public. The item before you tonight is a consideration of proposed zoning text amendments to allow digital freeway billboards in Vacaville. So staff is requesting that the Commission review proposed text amendments to the Vacaville sign ordinance, revising Title 14 of the Vacaville Municipal Code to include new policies, procedures, and standards for regulating digital freeway billboards, and also to amend the Vacaville Gateways Master Plan by revising policies regulating billboard development. So some of you may be aware, in March of last year, the city received an application from a billboard company, Clear Channel Outdoor, to convert one of their existing billboards into a digital freeway billboard located on eastbound I-80 near Kilkeny Road. And at that time, staff determined that the proposed conversion is prohibited under the current sign ordinance because digital freeway billboards are not allowed in Vacaville at this time. And so, in response to that application, the City Council held a study session to gauge whether or not we wanted to allow digital billboards in Vacaville. And in December of last year, City Council initiated a zoning text amendment to basically directing staff to draft amendments to regulate new digital freeway billboards in Vacaville. So a billboard is defined in the Vacaville Municipal Code as a sign that's used for general advertising or higher, typically an accessory used to a property and generates revenue. And it usually advertises things that are off-site, so not on the property itself where it's located. According to the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, the city is not able to control the message of the sign due to freedom of speech. And so the city can only focus on regulations that regulate the location of the sign, size, and other design standards. So the first component of these proposed zoning text amendments have to do with new policies. Following City Council direction, staff is proposing location restrictions that restrict new digital billboards to two freeway corridors in the city, along Interstate 80 and what's known as the Northeast Growth Area. This is the area between Leisure Town Road and Midway Road. And then also along Interstate 505, north of Vacaville Parkway and west of Interstate 505. And the map on the right shows the two corridors where digital freeway billboards would be allowed. These are the two corridors that City Council identified that they would like to see billboards placed. Another policy that the draft amendments tackle is static billboard removal. There's currently 16 standard billboards, or static billboards, in Vacaville. And so, any proposal for a digital billboard in the city would require that an applicant remove either three static billboards structures or four static billboard sign faces, whichever is greater depending on their assets. Based on feedback that we've received from billboard companies, for companies that don't have any other billboard assets in the city, they may pursue an in-lu option where they would propose offsetting benefits such as monetary contributions or community benefits like funding for parks or infrastructure. The city also has policies related to non-conforming digital billboards. The city currently has two digital billboards, the Nuttree one and also the one at the Vacaville Auto Mall. And so, under the proposed text amendments, these billboards may continue to operate as originally approved. And any proposal to extend their approval or to modify that approval would require consistency with the new standards that will be discussed further on in the presentation. They would also be required to negotiate a new development agreement with the city. The zoning text amendments also outline the procedures for how the city would process an application for a digital freeway billboard and who the decision-maker would be. Any billboard company looking to establish a digital billboard in the city would be required to enter into a development agreement with the city and also obtain approval of a conditional use permit and also major design review. The development agreement would provide provisions for relocating their existing static billboards, as mentioned earlier, and also establish one-time fees and revenue sharing that would be ongoing with the city. That revenue, per City Council direction, would be used for freeway beautification efforts and to uphold the efforts of the Vacaville Gateways Master Plan. And also, as always, digital billboards also have to obtain separate approval from Caltrans because the state also regulates outdoor advertising adjacent to freeways. The flowchart on the right shows the procedures that a proposed digital billboard would go to. After receiving the application, the project would go to the City Council for a deal points hearing regarding the development agreement. It would eventually return to the Planning Commission for a recommendation, followed by final action with the City Council. And then the third part of the proposed text amendments have to do with new development standards for digital billboards. They must contain welcome signage such as displaying the city's name or the city's logo. These should have decorative elements such as designs that reflect Vacaville theming and culture, such as golden hills or biotechnology agriculture. They're limited to a maximum height of 65 feet, which is the current maximum height for freeway signs in the city. They must be separated by at least 3,000 feet, as proposed by staff. And then also, staff is proposing a minimum distance of 300 feet from residences and hotels. New digital billboards must have landscaping at the base of the structure, except for areas that are used for maintenance and access. And then these standards are just the city's standards. Digital billboards would also have to comply with some of the Caltrans requirements that are shown at the right of the screen. So one of the development standards that staff is proposing is a minimum separation requirement. When we first came to the Planning Commission for a study session in March, we had initially proposed a 1,500-foot minimum separation requirement. However, upon further analysis and doing some conceptual plotting along these freeway corridors, we found that a 1,500-foot minimum separation may not be enough to prevent the proliferation of billboards in Vacaville, which is part of the direction that we received from City Council. And so staff is recommending that that minimum separation requirement be increased to 3,000 feet. So to help visualize this, here's a map showing the potential placement of billboards with 1,500 feet separation. As you can see, along Interstate 80, there could be a maximum potential of 10 digital billboards, and along Interstate 505, a maximum potential of six. Under the proposed 3,000-foot separation, this number would decrease to five billboards on Interstate 80 and three billboards on I-505. The city is also proposing performance standards that govern how digital billboards are allowed to operate. All messages must be static, which is compliant with state law. They also must be displayed for at least eight seconds. They need to incorporate automatic dimming devices to reflect changes in ambient lighting. And also, billboards must be able to be shut down remotely in the event of a malfunction in order to prevent negative impacts of Vacaville's character from the freeway. There's also a companion document that the city is updating called the City Gateways Design Master Plan, which was last updated in 2002. This document contains policies that govern and regulate billboards in the city. And so, staff is updating the document, now calling it the Vacaville Gateways Master Plan, in order to revise those policies related to billboard development. New policies include continuing the removal of static and standard billboards throughout the city limits, and also allowing digital billboards if they are to provide offsetting community benefits that enhance the freeway experience. Some of the policies in the plan have also been revised based on feedback from the California Department of Transportation to ensure consistency with state standards. So, the zoning text amendment process was first initiated because the city received an application from Clear Channel Outdoor to convert their billboard. It was first submitted in March of last year. And after we received the application, the city placed the application on hold so that way we can develop those standards and procedures for how we would process the application for that new digital billboard. If the zoning text amendments were adopted by council, Clear Channel's application would need to be revised in order to comply with the standards that are proposed by the city. However, on May 17, last Friday, the applicant withdrew their application claiming that the project is no longer financially viable. To analyze the potential impacts of the project under the California Environmental Quality Act, the city prepared an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration that analyzed the potential impacts of both the proposed zoning text amendments and also Clear Channel's proposed billboard conversion. The environmental document was published on April 18 and ran for a period of public review for about 30 days, closing yesterday. And within that time period, staff received three comments from the public, one from Caltrans, one from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, and then one from a Vacaville resident. The environmental document identifies potential impacts to aesthetics, geology, and soils, transportation, and tribal cultural resources, but also identifies mitigation measures that will be able to reduce all these impacts to a less than significant level. Some of the notable mitigation measures include aesthetic one, which requires any future billboard applicants to fund field testing of lighting impacts to ensure compliance with lighting regulations, and then transportation one and two, which required a billboard operator to demonstrate compliance with all applicable local and state requirements regarding potential hazards to drivers and motorists. Because the project affects areas that are within the Nuttree Airport area of influence and the Travis Air Force Base area of influence, the Solano County Airport Land use Commission must review for consistency with these plans prior to the City Council taking action on any of these items. On May 9, the Airport Land Use Commission held a study session regarding the proposed project and the environmental document, and they recommended that billboards along Interstate 505 located in the Nuttree Airport area of influence only face the north direction and receive a determination of no hazard from the Federal Aviation Administration for those billboards that are located in proximity to Nuttree Airport. And so staff has incorporated those recommendations into the proposed amendments that are before you tonight. And we will be returning to the Airport Land Use Commission tentatively on June 13 in order to get that consistency determination from the Commission. As part of this project, staff has conducted a wide variety of public outreach because it is an amendment to our zoning code. In October of last year, we held a community meeting and also a stakeholder meeting. We also launched an online poll. In February of this year, we released the draft amendments for review and held another series of community and stakeholder meetings. On May 10, we did publish the public notice for this project. In the staff report, there is a summary of all the public outreach efforts that staff has done for this project. Since today, we have received approximately eight correspondence from members of the public regarding the project. These include a letter from Andy Goodman, who spoke at the last Planning Commission study session, and he wrote a letter appreciating the non-conforming billboard standards that were added to the draft zoning text amendments, but also asking the Commission to consider whether billboards would be allowed along other parts of 80 and 505. We got correspondence from Meadow Advertising, who stated that they appreciate that there's an in-lu option because they don't have many billboard assets in the city. We got a letter from the Willis-Linjepson Chapter of the California Native Plant Society, and they recommended that additional language be incorporated into the Vacaville Gateways Master Plan to promote the use of native plants along the freeway. We got an email from Clear Channel Outdoor stating that they're withdrawing their project application for their billboard conversion. And then we got an email from Clear Channel's engineer, and they expressed disagreement with the city's processing of the Clear Channel Outdoor application for their billboard conversion. At the last Planning Commission meeting in March, the Commission did request an analysis of different separation requirements for digital freeway billboards. And so staff looked at four different plotting scenarios throughout the city. One with the proposed 1,500-foot minimum separation that we initially proposed, one with that same minimum separation requirement but throughout the rest of Interstate 80 and Interstate 505, and then one with 3,000-foot minimum separation and 4,500-foot minimum separation. Following Council direction, the proposed zoning text amendments only allow billboards along certain portions of 505 and 80 in the Northeast Growth Area, because that is what Council directed staff to do in December. Additionally, Council did direct staff to use digital billboards as a mechanism to remove policies in the inner city, and that is the direction that staff has taken in revising the zoning text amendments and also the Vacaville Gateways Master Plan. And so staff is recommending that 3,000-foot minimum separation requirement be implemented to prevent the proliferation of billboards throughout these two areas in the city. And so to conclude, staff supports the project because it's consistent with City Council direction and meets the required findings for approval, and also complies with the general plan, the city's zoning ordinance, and also state law. And so staff recommends that by simple motion, the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution adopting the ISMD for the project and introducing an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Municipal Code and the Vacaville Gateways Master Plan. And so that concludes staff's presentations. We'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any commissioner questions? Commissioner Fortney.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. My first question is in regards to the communications that you have there that was presented to us by the Nature Society regarding the native plants along the freeway there. Do we even have jurisdiction to what gets planted on Caltrans right of way?
So, in regards to planning along and within Caltrans right of way, we do coordinate with Caltrans when they have projects in the freeway. But ultimately, Caltrans does have the authority to plant whatever they want in the freeway. The Gateways Master Plan does call for plantings on private property within city limits, that is within the city's jurisdiction, for properties that do abut the freeway. And so, those properties would be subject to the plant palette that's proposed in the Gateways Master Plan.
Okay. Thank you. Second, can we get an update? Do we have, in the revenue sharing, or the revenue that's to come to the city of Vacaville per the digital billboard, do we have a dollar amount? Do we have a percentage? Will that all be done in the development agreement? And the second question, the second part of that is, will those funds go to beautification of our on and off ramps? And can you give me an update, or maybe Public Works give us an idea? Do we have control of those on and off ramps to actually do the improvements and maintain beautification in our gateways?
So, to answer your first question, the amount of revenue that the city would receive would be negotiated on a case-by-case basis with each billboard operator, and then you want to answer.
For the second question, I don't have an update for you on which off ramps and on-ramp areas are being proposed. The idea of whether or not the beautification would be limited to the sign would likely be determined on a case-by-case scenarios. For those signs that would be located nowhere near an off ramp or an on ramp, likely you would see it near the sign itself. Those that might be closer, there would be some room for, or some latitude for negotiating on how those expand and to maybe the off ramp areas.
Gotcha. So, currently, they're all Caltrans-controlled, and we have either working relationships to maintain them, or is it on Caltrans?
I would suggest that since our Public Works Director is here likely for the CAP item, he could come down and explain the city's efforts to work with Caltrans.
Thank you. I mean, the example would be RENS. I know it's a staging site right now, but I mean, we're looking at two and a half, three feet high visibility of weeds there now.
Brian McLean, Director of Public Works. Thank you for the question. So, city council, was it, let's see, this is in May, so it must have been April of this year, approved a contract with Caltrans that transfers the maintenance of four sites for on-off ramps from Caltrans to the city of Vacaville. We're going through the process right now of signing the final contract documents. The on-off ramps are Merchant Street, or Alamo Merchant at the RENS, Alamo across the other side, and then Davis Street on-off ramp, and then the Hickory Davis, or Hickory Lane side on the other side of it. So, those four particular on-off ramps are technically under our control at this point for the maintenance, and we've got a program with our New Image Consulting. There are crews that go out and do the landscape improvements for the medians and whatnot within the city. And so, we'll be going through the process of getting them trained up over the next few months to get them to start maintaining those areas. The concept here is if the city council decides that we're doing a good job, we want to continue to move forward with expanding our reach on these on-off ramps to other areas within the city, then Public Works would come back with a recommendation and a new contract or amendment with Caltrans to be able to do exactly that, move that forward.
Commissioner Beaumont.
Thank you very much. When I first saw this, could you put up page 151 for me?
You referencing the online poll?
Yep. Yes, sir. My question is, when I saw that, the first thing that I saw was that three-quarters of the citizens of Vacaville said they don't want digital billboards. And I'm questioning why that didn't throw a big red flag up here as to why we want to do something that three-quarters of the citizens of Vacaville don't really want.
At the time when we were presenting the information to city council, this poll was available, and that was available to city council when they made their recommendation and directed staff to do that.
I guess I understand that I see a revenue stream here that the city council really would like to have, but I also see that the citizens really dislike digital billboards. And so, I have a problem with one versus the other, and that's just my personal opinion. But I think I'm representing a lot of people in the Vacaville citizenry that have that same problem. Thank you.
We're at the question stage. I will answer the question in a little bit more detail. The survey that staff conducted was not a scientific survey, and it literally was pushed out via social media, it was announced publicly. So, it's not intended to represent the people of Vacaville. It's more of a snapshot of feedback for folks that chose to take the survey. We conducted that survey in addition to going out to industry groups, in addition to having community meetings. So, we got a variety of feedback from a variety of places. But the goal was to make sure that people who wanted to express their opinions had a way to do so.
I guess I would argue that there's nobody I know that thinks digital billboards are nice to look at. And if you did a real poll, you might see that it's more than 75%. So, that's my only point.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yeah, I had a question. I think I saw in the slide deck that the Nuttree and Vacaville Autumn are currently non-conforming, correct? So, I'm wondering how those were approved and erected. I mean, it's the process of that, and was there any polling done then for those billboards?
Not to our knowledge that any polling was done. They were approved before we amended our sign ordinance around 2015, 2016. And around that time is when the prohibition came into play, when we amended our sign ordinance. It was mainly to make sure that it was content neutral, and we were not regulating the actual messages on signage throughout the city.
Thank you. So, you said 2015? Those were?
Approximately is when, in front of Planning Commission City Council for that comprehensive sign code update.
Do we have any other commissioner questions before I move on to a public comment? I'm going to open up public comment. Yes, please come down to the podium, and you'll have three minutes. Start your clock when you get down there.
For allowing me to make my comments. My name is Paul Schechter. I've been a teacher, an ironworker, professional, big rig driver, and now I'm working in investing and security. I'm not going to make, beauty lies in the eyes of the beholder, so I'm not going to make an aesthetic argument one way or the other because I don't think it will be compelling for many. I think the compelling argument is public safety. Hear and see from everybody, from the Highway Patrol to public announcements about distractions. Don't text and drive. Don't pick up things in your car. I have seen my share of carnage on the road. It just takes a second, just a second. We don't need any more distractions. I teach driving to my family. The three rules are pay attention, pay attention, pay attention. It just takes a second for accident to occur. We don't need another distraction for people. Are these signs affected, these digital signs? Absolutely. Two of them. Oh, start to read that. Oh, let me see that. That's all it takes. It's a matter of public safety. It's a matter of life and death. I know the story of an F-14 pilot who was coming in to land on an aircraft carrier at sea. He had completed over 100 missions, and they were screaming at him, abort, 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 abort. Crashed right into the back of the aircraft carrier. Why? Because his glass was overfilled. He couldn't take any more information. He was excessively, too much information. And they were screaming at him on the radio, the guy who operates the meatball at the end of the aircraft carrier's, abort, abort, abort. Register to him. That was the conclusion of the investigation. So, my case, which I hope is compelling to many or most of you, is public safety. We don't need more distractions for drivers. The people on the road are not Tomcat F-14 operators. Some of them should probably never even be driving a car. Adding another distraction on the road, in my view, is irrational, and it doesn't represent public safety for residents of Vacaville or those who drive through here. It's a matter of life. I would encourage you to deny this application out of hand.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? I'm going to close public comment.
There's one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, please come down to the podium.
I've been doing business with the city of Vacaville for 20, 30 years. To answer your question, Mr. Vargas, Tarzy, Tony Batarzy, I worked for him for 40 years. I'm retired now. We got the first Autumn Ball in here right after the big stores went in. How the reader boards are, we called them reader boards back then. We were, that was in our proposition with the city to put the Autumn Ball in from the get-go. We said, we don't have a reader board, we don't put it in. And that, I don't know about the big box, but I heard that was a big box, to answer your question.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any further public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Vargas.
Yeah, I think I, in the slide deck, or discussed by staff, that the digital billboards are used for not necessarily local business advertisement. Is that correct? Or is it a blend of both? It seems as if it was for outside, off-site businesses, not necessarily for the city of Vacaville. Is that correct?
So, to clarify off-site advertising, so billboards do not advertise anything at the site of where the billboard is located.
Okay.
They can advertise businesses that are located in Vacaville as long as it's not like at the location of where the billboard is.
Thank you for clarifying. So, to the gentleman's point of concern, my question is, was there any research or any, anything in the scope of studies that showed any correlation between vehicular
We didn't do that analysis. The main idea was that if Caltrans had standards for their freeways and how that, the minimum thing that we could do for our standards would be to replicate and then build upon those so that we were more restrictive. Where you're seeing it more restrictive is in the mitigation measures proposed with this ordinance, which would require further testing in the field and the ability to just shut off these things when you notice that there's a malfunction or something like that.
Commissioner Beaumont.
Thank you very much. My final comment would be on page 132. You show 1,500 feet separation throughout the city for billboards, and 27 on 80 and 10 on 505. And I guess my problem is, is once we open this door up for digital billboards, I'm afraid that five to 10 years from now, when the city council likes all that revenue coming in, that this is what our city will look like. It'll be nothing but digital billboards, and the citizens have no say on that. You know, I mean, we're up here talking about it now, but we're going to approve five and three, which is just the beginning as far as I'm concerned. And so, I have a real hesitation to vote for this because I don't want to open that door. Do you have any comment on that?
The limitation just shows for 505 and Interstate 80 right now. If there is a change that's intended by city council, it would go through another process with public outreach, public participation, public hearings just like this, if it were being amended to extend anything beyond.
This is what it could possibly look like.
The proposed limitation right now, as directed by city council, only shows for these areas.
Right.
You know, it's too difficult to stipulate whether or not there is the potential to go one way or the other about future situations.
Understand. Thanks, Al.
To further clarify, though, those exhibits that show the 1,500-foot separation, that's not what staff's recommending. Staff's recommending the 3,000-foot separation, but also, the goal of doing those studies and illustrations is to try to show like the most that could happen. But these are all like perfectly placed, presuming that the boards can literally go at 3,000-foot intervals, so we think it's not that likely it will happen. But for sequoia purposes and for project analysis purposes, we really want to be very transparent on what the upper limit could look like in a perfect scenario where these things are evenly spaced. I don't know that staff believes that's what would actually happen in the real world.
No, and I don't either, and I hope not, but this is what might possibly happen in worst-case scenario. That's all I'm trying to point out. Thank you.
Commissioner Banter?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I think based off city council's direction, this is a great product that you're putting forward, or proposal that you're putting forward for us to vote on. It's what they've asked for, and I think you've taken into consideration what we've all said and what city council has said in taking that all into consideration. I did have a question, though, about, because Clear Channel said it's not viable anymore, it's not a viable project. Do you foresee that this, I know there's still some interest in it, but do you foresee it being a lot of people saying that this, it may not work for them anymore? So, this is not going to be viable for many people?
The response that was received from Clear Channel was limited to Clear Channel. What we've heard from other billboard operators is, why not extend it further beyond the city limits? Thank you for including the in-lu fee option because we don't own a billboard elsewhere, so that gives us an opportunity to negotiate with the city on maybe paying an in-lu fee. So, that particular comment about viability was just limited to one billboard operator.
Perfect. And then I know at a previous commission meeting, we had talked about the other side of the gateway. Has any discussion been put into that? The other side of 80?
So, at this time, staff is following city council direction as to which areas they want to allow digital billboards in.
Perfect.
Commissioner Klein.
So, I'm curious. I think we, at the study session, had said something about other jurisdictions, maybe giving us a sense of how other cities that are similarly sized have approached this topic. Do we have any just actual feedback, or summarize what your takeaway was from that?
Yeah, so, in August of last year, when we first took the idea of digital billboards to city council, staff did do a lot of research at other jurisdictions in Solano County, in the Bay Area, and in the wider Sacramento region, to see what types of billboards they had in their city, what kind of benefits were they gaining from their development agreements, and that helped to influence the different alternatives that city council considered in December that ultimately led to these zoning text amendments that we have before us tonight. The zoning text amendments that are before us tonight were also modeled on other ordinances that other cities have adopted, such as South San Francisco, city of Milpitas, city of Oxnard in Southern California. So, a lot of the different standards and regulations that are being proposed tonight is a synthesis of best practices from other jurisdictions.
Any cities up here like Folsom or Roseville that you might be looking, that you might have looked at to get a sense of how their ordinance appears?
Yeah, so, we did look at Folsom, and we did look at Roseville. We did take some of their standards. But a lot of the inspiration for the current iteration of standards is mostly, mostly based on South San Francisco and Milbury, or sorry, uh, Milpitas.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lightfoot.
Thank you very much. I don't recall seeing a limitation between a digital billboard and a static billboard. Is there, is there a limitation in the, in the draft that limits a digital billboard next to a non-digital billboard?
Yeah, so the city is not currently proposing any restriction or minimum separation between digital billboards and static billboards. I do believe that Caltrans has a requirement for minimum separation between those two types. But I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Okay. Is, um, can you expand a little bit more on the in lieu of fee on removal? I think the, one of the main, one of the main pushes to get digital billboards in the beginning was, um, was a trade-off of removing the static billboards. It's giving Vacaville a, a branding opportunity. It's beautifying our freeway. So, um, can you, so can operators without or withstand or static billboards choose the in lieu of option? Does it, does the in lieu of option discourage the removal, which was the intended initial purpose?
So the, the in lieu fee was a text addition that was added in response to receiving public feedback from those billboard operators that do not have signs. The sequencing that would likely occur for billboard operators would be first, uh, trying to, uh, seek out the removal of any static billboards elsewhere along our freeways. If we are working with a billboard operator that only has one billboard, then they would have the opportunity to go through that in lieu fee option. Ultimately, it's going to be up to city council and their observation as to what those business deal points would be as part of the development agreement. City council at that time could decide, maybe the in lieu fee is not enough. Maybe there's more that needs to be considered by that particular billboard operator. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so I'm, I, I don't know how to amend your language to say like, how do we take priority on, um, on removal over the in lieu of fee just as a, as a way out of not complying to the initial, you know, request for why we were pursuing this in the first place?
Uh, on page 56, we outline the reduction process. And it starts off with A, removal ratio, and then B, in lieu. And the first sentence in there says, if a digital billboard applicant does not have sufficient existing billboard structures or sign faces, then they could proceed to this one. So they have to pass the test first of A.
Got it. Thank you very much. Yep.
Do we have any other commissioner comments? Okay. Wait.
I'd like to move the item.
Oh, well, I just wanted to make mine first. So my comments are, this is the direction that council would like to go. And we are a supporting body to provide recommendations. I understand the concerns for safety. I've had to drive back and forth to San Jose quite a lot recently. And so I do understand the distracting driving. However, with this, we do have the possibility of removing some of the static billboards we already have. And I was at the council meeting where they discussed the fees that are, the costs that are going to be associated with taking over some of the, um, free, uh, off-ramps. And so that's where I think the in lieu fees can really help with offsetting that. So with that said, I am in support. And we have a motion? Motion from Commissioner Klein. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Banta. Nancy, can you please, uh, do the roll call vote?
Commissioner Klein?
Yes.
Courtney?
Yes.
Vargas?
Yes.
Banta?
Yes.
Beaumont?
No.
Vice Chair Lightfoot?
Yes.
Chair Rudin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the next item. Our next public hearing this evening is to receive a presentation on the 2024 Annual Land Use and Development Code Update. We will first hear a presentation by staff, followed by commissioner questions, and then we will open it up for public comment. May we please have the staff presentation?
Good evening. Albertino, your senior planner here at City of Vacaville Community Development Department. The item before you tonight is the 2024 Annual Land Use Development Code Update. The project is to amend division, two divisions within Title 14. Division 1402, which is our interpretations and definitions, and Division 1409, which is our zoning ordinance. And we've dissected it into three parts. Part one addresses minor and administrative text amendments to improve procedures, correct references, and add new regulations. And part two is text amendments to implement various, uh, programs that were adopted with the 2023-2031 housing element that was adopted by city council last June. Uh, and then the third part is to address some administrative text amendments that were imposed on the city by the Airport Land Use Commission as part of the adoption of the, uh, housing element from last year. As, as usual, we like to provide some background information. How did we get to this part? So it starts in 2015, when the city adopted a comprehensive update to the general plan, which included a final environmental impact report. In January 2020, we updated our zoning map to be consistent with those changes to the general plan. In September of 2021, we also conducted a technical update to our transportation element and our general plan. And then in February 2022, we conducted a comprehensive update to our municipal code to reflect many of the changes in policies that were adopted with the general plan. All this culminating in, uh, June of 2022 with additional zoning map updates to reflect many of those changes that occurred with our municipal code update. That new code effect went into July of 2022. So after a year of working with this new code, in June of 2023, we proceeded through some amendments to the code to again, address some minor consistencies, some issues with language. And that went through the review and approval process with planning commission and city council. Uh, and, and also something significant that happened within that same timeframe was the adoption of the housing element, which, uh, included various programs that the city staff would be required for implementing within our municipal code in a variety of different other areas. And so all that leads into our next, uh, update for this year. And it starts with part one, which are minor administrative changes. So these changes are primarily affecting Division 1409. We're going to be updating some procedures. A notable procedure that we're changing is if anybody wants to make a zoning text amendment from the public, they have to first get city council's initiation. We've gone down that process, um, a variety of times, and it's gotten to city council. And city council said, no, we've actually, we want to go in a different direction. So it's better to get buy-in from city council earlier in the process. So that's the main purpose for that particular amendment. Uh, in residential districts, we're adding a number of different standards that seem to be omitted or just wouldn't help strengthen the development review process. But one of the most significant changes that we're making is we're adding some standards for multifamily development when it's specifically abutting or across the street from single-family homes. Increasing those setbacks, increasing the building variation. So that way, you're able to reduce the potential impact of large three-story apartment buildings that might be across from single-family homes. Commercial districts didn't have any trash enclosures, so we added standard, uh, standards for that. Same thing for employment districts, industrial parks, business parks. We added some information for general site regulations, something that we had noted that there weren't any setbacks for balconies in the rear yards. So how do you deal with a situation where somebody has a balcony and then it's 10 feet from the rear property line overlooking your neighbor? Now we have standards for that. Blade signs largely are limited to where you're going to find them in the factory stores, over in the Nut Tree Village also. But we didn't have any blade standard signs. Those are the ones that hang under the marquee of a business. So we added standards to allow for those. There were some other inconsistencies, uh, that were changed. Last year, there was, uh, amendment to a general plan policy that said that, uh, there was a requirement for a 200-foot setback between industrial businesses and residential businesses, but city council made that change. That's also noted in our zoning ordinance, so we made that to be consistent with what city council had done. Added green tree to the list of existing specific plans, and then made some correction to references in the conditional use permit and home occupation permits to make sure that they reference the correct sections. So that's pretty much it for that first part. Now, the second part is the meat and potatoes of this entire zoning, uh, proposal to amend the text. Uh, and it starts with housing implementation. These were many of the programs that were adopted from, uh, city council with the housing element last year. And the first is to update our density bonus ordinance so that way it matches state law. Uh, and this is affecting Chapter 1409 to 10, affordable housing, density bonuses, and incentives to be consistent with that state law. Timeframe that you'll notice for many of these, that was required for staff to complete, December 2024, for we are on schedule to get that done before, uh, the due date. Number two, adding incentive requirements to incentivize for developers to build missing middle housing. And, uh, and that's going to largely affect residential zoning districts. Some of the, for example, something that might incentivize is reducing parking requirements for missing middle to make it easier for them to be able to use the site. Uh, also adding incentives for three-bedroom apartments. That's affecting residential zoning districts, commercial mixed-use districts, and parking loading standards. We're also updating our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. That also includes junior accessory dwelling units to match state law. State law seems to be changing quite a bit. So we're wanting to be keeping up with the times for that one. That timeframe for completion is December of 2025. So we're way ahead of schedule for that. Continuing on, number five, we're, uh, amending, uh, the code to allow supportive housing in various zoning districts, mainly residential, commercial, mixed-use, and employment. We're also adding a definition for that. Uh, allowing also employment, uh, employee housing. Uh, this includes the addition of a definition and classification. That's that amendment that affects, uh, Division 1402 for interpretations and definitions. And then also allowing it to be, uh, within residential, commercial, mixed-use, agricultural, and a variety of different zoning districts. Also adding a new section for agricultural employee housing within our code. Adding single-room occupancies, uh, definition classifications for that, uh, as well as a new section that governs those. Low-barrier navigation centers to various zoning districts. Also, again, adding a definition and then adding, uh, adding as an allowable use within commercial and mixed-use zoning and employment districts. Same thing for emergency shelters. And then, um, one last one is revising, uh, two particular entitlements, the conditional use permit and adjustment, to make sure that the findings that are required to be made are based off of objectiveness, compliance with standards, and not, does it, you know, is it generally compatible with surrounding development? That would be an example of subjectiveness versus, does it meet the setback standards? Does it meet high standards? Things like that. Uh, so that's part two. Part three, uh, is affecting our airport environmentals overlay district. This is within 1409. And specifically, it's when we have to refer a project to the Solana Airport Land Use Commission. And, uh, June of last year, we took the housing element to Solana Airport Land Use Commission for a consistency determination to make sure all the changes that were being proposed, and it was brought to our attention from the commission, that, uh, they were concerned with some of the changes that were being made to densities within Zone D and Zone E. And so what they had asked was that, uh, for those particular projects, we'll limit the density, and that was completed already. Uh, those are limited 20.1 to 24 units per acre, and those are areas that are within Zone D. I think the villas at North Village is, uh, those are those luxury apartments. Those are already built, but there is a limitation that they can't exceed more than 24 units per acre. Uh, and then some other areas that are off of Callan Street have the potential, they are existing apartments, but they have the potential to maybe be redeveloped at some point in the future. Those would also be limited to no more than 24 units per acre. So we already completed our changes to our general plan map and our zoning map, and our ordinance is to reflect those, uh, changes. It's a new general plan designation called High Density Limited designation. But there was still this outstanding requirement, which was, uh, require ALUC for any project that is within Zone C of the Nut Tree Airport Compatibility Plan. And Zone C, most notably, is that business park area that's within North Village, that is parallel to North Village Parkway. So, uh, we have a text amendment to, to the list of projects that need to be referred to ALUC. And it's any new construction or modification to lighting, landscaping, or parking lots in Zone A and the northern area of Zone C. Now, this is a particular change that we made. The original one was just limited to Zone C. But when we brought the comprehensive amendments that we're talking about tonight to the Airport Land Use Commission, they took a look at that, compliance with that original condition of approval, and they said, you know what? We are a little concerned about development that is occurring within Zone A that's directly abutting, uh, the runway area. So why don't we just say that any new development involving new landscaping within Zone A, new, uh, changes to parking lots and new buildings that are directly adjacent to the runway, let's refer those to Airport Land Use Commission, and then also anything that's within Zone C within that business park area. So those are the amendments, uh, that are before you tonight. We had that public hearing with Airport Land Use Commission on April 11th. They voted unanimously, determined all the changes that were proposed to be consistent with both of those airport compatibility plans that you see on the screen. So in conclusion, uh, we found that the proposed amendments would create consistency between the general plan and zoning ordinance. It would also rectify some inconsistencies and inaccuracies, uh, with our references. It addresses city council's concerns related to objective standards for multifamily development, abutting those single-family development that we heard last year. Uh, and it also helps to implement housing element programs within the required timeframe. So with that, we have a recommendation for the planning commission to adopt the resolution to reaffirm the general plan, FEIR and SEIR. And then also for the city council to introduce the ordinance that would adopt these, uh, new changes to their zoning code. Uh, that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Do we have any commissioner questions? Commissioner Banta.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I had a question about the amendment for multifamily. So we've never had any objective standards for multifamily and adjacent or abutting to single-family detached homes before. That, I'm assuming that's why we created one. The setbacks, are those standard setbacks for normal development? For regular, single-family detached setbacks, the 10 feet from the sides and the 15 feet from the street? Is that similar to what like a courtyard development would be? Or is that more or less than what other developments are? I'm just kind of curious.
We're adding more. So it's not just your standard setbacks for multifamily. Multifamily has their own standards for setbacks for residential high density, uh, for those types. We're adding more on top of that. So as an example, on page 286 of the packet, uh, building height, one of the standards that we're suggesting is that the first row of buildings located across the street of, or abutting adjacent to single-family homes shall be no taller than two stories in height, except if it's separated by a four-lane arterial street, like Leisure Town Road or Alamo. Uh, a setback example would be additional setbacks of five feet shall be added to every floor above the ground floor. Uh, the setbacks shall be measured from the wall plane of the ground floor living space. So that way, you're not having like, is it measured based off of a porch? No, it's based off of the wall plane for that first floor. So what those two essentially do is that you have that increased, you have the limitation on building heights, and then you also have increased setbacks. So that way, if you have something across the street, uh, from single-family homes, they're pushed back, and then the second story and third story push back even farther. So it's limiting, you're not creating this very towering wall feature that can be intimidating and, and can affect that visual character of, uh, single-family residential areas.
Right. Um, I guess my, my question also would be, how do we propose this is going, how do we think this is going to affect like our infill projects? We already are kind of struggling with infill projects, and that would potentially be multi. And this seems like it's going to make it more difficult. And then we're including masonry walls to go around multi in the middle of single family.
These were many of the concerns that we had heard from city council, uh, previous projects, uh, such as downtown apartments. And a lot of the concerns that we had heard from residents was that, uh, the buildings are just too tall. Uh, and unfortunately, it does result in a lot of these infill sites that end up being right next to, uh, single-family homes. We also do have infill sites that are abutting, um, uh, commercial areas. You know, there's some of those mixed-use areas that you might find that could have apartment projects. Um, and then some other areas where this probably likely wouldn't apply to is when you have like a large creek that's separating single-family homes. So there are some, uh, exceptions to that. Ultimately, developers have the opportunity to be able to request exceptions from these standards, and that would, something like that would have to go before the planning commission for that decision.
Okay, so a developer could still request, um, the setbacks to be changed for their developments and stuff? Okay. Yeah, I guess my comments would just be, we, we know we need to build. We build single-family homes in courtyard style, which are very close to each other, and it seems a little bit anti-multi, multifamily to me, so.
Thank you. Do we have any other commissioner questions? Then I'm going to open it up. Then I'm going to open it up to the public. Do we have any public comment on this item? Nope. I will close public comment. Do we have any commissioner deliberation? Are we ready to make a motion? Oh, Commissioner Klein.
Great job. I know you guys worked for a while on this. It's comprehensive. I'll move the item.
You have a second?
Great. We have a motion by Commissioner Klein, a second by Commissioner Fortney. And I didn't do this last time. We need to read this, correct? Okay. Commissioner Klein.
I would like to move the item. Sorry, I missed what's happening.
You have to read that.
Oh, doc.
Remember my favorite, my favorite thing, are reading the really long ones?
If I knew I had to work. Okay. Sorry, I'm a little rusty. By simple motion, I recommend that the city council of the city of Vacaville adopt a resolution reaffirming the Vacaville Plan Final Environmental Impact Report, FEIR, and final supplemental EIR, FSEIR, and concluding that no subsequent EIR is required pursuant to section 15162 of the Public Resource Code and SEQA Guidelines for the 2024 Annual Land Use and Development Code Update, and introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Vacaville amending title 14 of the City of Vacaville Municipal Code by updating division 14 dot 02, entitled Interpretations and Definitions, and division 14 dot 09, entitled Zoning, as shown in Exhibits B, C, and D. Which I'm happy to read those exhibits as well. I'm going at it.
Nancy, can you please do the roll call vote? Commissioner Klein?
Yes.
Commissioner Fortney?
Yes.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yes.
Commissioner Banta?
No.
Commissioner Beaumont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lightfoot?
Yes.
Chair Rudeen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for your report, for your presentation. Moving on to the next item, business. We'll move on to our business this evening, which is to receive a presentation on embracing Andrews Park. We will first hear a presentation by staff.
We have one more project before you.
My goodness, I'm so sorry. I'm not used to, I'm not used to reading this, I apologize. Okay. Everybody? Yes. Consistency. My apologies. Okay, our next public hearing this evening is to receive a presentation on general plan consistency review for new projects in the 2024-2025 capital improvement program. We will first hear a presentation by staff, followed by commissioner questions, and then we will open it for public comment. May we please have the staff presentation? Sorry about that.
Hi, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Eileen Lee, and tonight I will be presenting a presentation on the 2024 to 2025 fiscal year capital improvement program and general plan consistency review. So this evening's request is that, is to have the Planning Commission determine that the proposed projects for the 2024 to 2025 capital improvement program is consistent with the general plan. To the right of the screen shows the variety of projects proposed for this year's CIP program. To provide some background, capital improvement programs, or CIP, is essentially a blueprint for building and maintaining infrastructure within cities. In addition, it is a way where cities can provide major improvements to city or public-related infrastructure and facilities, and the essential goal of CIP projects is to implement general plan goals, policies, and actions. As required by Government Code Section 65401 and 65402, cities must provide an annual review on proposed CIP projects each year to determine consistency with the general plan, goals, and policies for areas such as circulation improvements, open space areas, and public facilities and services. To provide a summary for this year, there are 16 new CIP projects proposed for the fiscal year, which include a variety of topics and areas such as lighting improvements, building renovations, sewer replacements, and accessibility upgrades. So to provide highlights on this year's projects, there is a Parks and Rec Centennial in Arlington Ball Field Lighting Phase Two that is proposed, which is including the installation of additional ball field lighting to expand the potential hours of operations and uses of these fields. In addition, other projects include public infrastructure improvements such as the upsizing of the Allison Parkway trunk sewer and the Alamo Creek Bank stabilization, which allows for the repair and stabilization of the Gogur Creek to help prevent erosion, protect private properties around the area, and prevent damage to the city's bike paths. Other CIP project highlights include public facilities and services. For example, the Vacaville Social Services Center is looking to install an ADA ramp to ensure that it is more accessible to the public. In addition, the U Latice Creek Center and Vacaville Performing Arts Theater is looking to replace its roofing for the facilities to more of a new and better roofing material for the facilities. In addition, there is a housing and community services rehabilitation plan, which is to kind of uplift and revitalize about 1,500 square feet of empty office spaces currently at the housing and community services area to accommodate more staff and to include repairs to the facilities and allow more space for employees to work, and includes features such as upgrades to security, the fixtures of restroom so they are usable for staff, and repair of ceilings. This evening, staff's recommendation is that by simple motion, the Planning Commission recommends that the city council of Vacaville determines that the capital improvement program for the 2024 to 2025 fiscal year is consistent with the Vacaville general plan. And I am here for any questions. In addition, our Public Works Development Engineering Manager and Director are here for any questions about the specific projects proposed for this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. All right, let's see how, okay. Commissioner Beaumont.
Yeah, thank you very much for that presentation. Can you help me remember with these 16 programs? Do they get presented to the city council? How does it get, who gets the priority? Who votes and who gets the priority for these programs over the years' time?
City council does.
What's that?
City council gets the, has the authority to make a final decision on these projects. But it does require a recommendation of general plan consistency from the planning commission.
They just decide which projects they want to start with and down through the list? You know, they, they decide which projects go first and?
For the question of its priority, I think we'll defer to our colleagues over in Public Works for their experiences on how that usually goes. This isn't a list on priority, it's just a list to identify what the projects are.
It's a want list, yeah. Thank you.
Evening, again. The priorities of the departments as they submit their CIP project, the departments, whether it be safety, fire, PD, Public Works, community development, they put a priority, their specific priority related to their projects. And so the, the project list is compiled up with the department's specific priorities, and that's what's pushed forward to the city manager and then up to city council.
Okay, Commissioner Vargas.
I'm going to be a little selfish here because my, my son plays Little League baseball and is knee deep in playoffs right now. And so for the Centennial Arlington Ball Field Lighting Phase Two, I think there was lighting to two fields, or at least one field at each respective park. So that, this means an additional lighting to fields at Centennial and Arlington, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. The reason I ask is both Little Leagues, National and American are growing in numbers, right? And so the ability to play, for example, my son plays city fall ball, right? So it gets dark at seven o'clock, so there's no lighting. So that actually pushes some of the games out. When you talk about summer games, then it's, when you have a multitude of teams that are playing, not enough fields, and it pushes into the darkness, then obviously you have the ability to not have enough games, and you're having to push out games, or having kids like my son who will play till 9:30 at night, which is extremely late. So that I will just share as a priority. I probably will share with city council as well, but that's certainly some of the feedback that I've received from both National and American League boards, so we'll convey. Thank you.
Do we have any other commissioner questions? Commissioner Banta?
Thank you for the presentation. To Commissioner Beaumont's kind of question about priority, do we, do we project or think that all of these plant, these projects will be finished? Like, what's the timeline on them? Do they follow over year to year? Is it just we start on it now and then they come back again?
Hi, Rick Navarro, Engineering Manager. The, these projects, when they go to council, council will decide which projects will, will get funded. And then, once they are given to us in Public Works, then we look at our, our workload and confer with different departments to, to determine which, which are the priority projects. So it's not done in a vacuum. We'll, we'll work with different departments.
But most likely, they'll all be done within this fiscal year?
Oh, no, some of these, no, we will, like the, some, some of the bigger projects, some of the funding we are requesting this year is just to start off the projects, to scope them out, and then we'll go back to council for additional funding to, to let them know, okay, what the scope is and, you know, how much it's going to cost.
And then I do have a question about the Centennial Field in Arlington Park. Are those parks open to the public fully, or are they solely for the baseball leagues? Are the people able to play on those parks at any time?
That's a good question. I wish our colleagues from Parks and Recreation were here to answer that. We, we don't know about the availability or the leasing or rental of those fields. That's a very good question. We could look into that.
But they are public parks, and they are public spaces where the public is welcome. Yes, absolutely.
That's good, yeah. I was going to answer that, yes. But I do think that some of the time is the ball teams and the certain games that they have. So you have to find the times that it's not reserved in order to use it, which would be hard pressed to find, I think.
So if you're trying to access an actual baseball field, that makes it difficult. But the surrounding areas to the baseball fields are open to the public, yes.
Does that answer your question?
Okay, great. I'm going to open this up to public comment. Do we have any public comment? Have any public? I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to commission for deliberation, and if anybody has a motion. Commissioner Beaumont.
I'd be happy to make a motion. You just got to read recommendations, sorry.
Sorry, Commissioner Beaumont.
I'd be happy to make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Beaumont. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Vargas. Hi, Mr. Beaumont. Commissioner Beaumont, you get to read this one.
Okay. Recommended action by simple motion, recommend to the city council of the city of Vacaville, determine the capital improvement program for the 2024-2025 fiscal year is consistent with the Vacaville general plan.
Nancy, can we please have a roll call vote? Commissioner Klein? Commissioner Fortney?
Yes.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yes.
Commissioner Banta?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaumont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lightfoot?
Yes.
Chair Rudeen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for your presentation. Okay. Now I'm back on track. Now we will move on to business this evening, which is to receive a presentation on embracing St. Andrews Park. We will first hear a presentation by staff, followed by commissioner questions, and then we will open it up for public comment. May we please have staff presentation?
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. So this will be a presentation by our students from UC Davis. Just a little bit of background on our collaborations over the years with UC Davis, sustainable environmental design and architectural landscaping. There have been several occasions, I would say probably over the last six years, where first they approached us and said, you know, are there any sort of city projects that our students could take on, come up with planning? So there have been, I think, a handful of times where we've laid out certain goals that we have, or certain things that we'd like them to research, and they've done that and presented their findings. This is the first time that those findings are being presented to planning commission by the students themselves. So this time, we, we mentioned and sort of focused on downtown, and how can we make downtown more of a destination than it needs to be, and that the council's envisioning with the downtown specific plan. So that was the initial goal for the students, and we walked downtown, gave some information, provided all sorts of documents. They interviewed a number of people downtown and sort of came up with their own ways of analyzing what, what could be done, and their focus became Andrews Park. And so there's a presentation tonight by the students on embracing Andrews Park and making Andrews Park more of a focal point of downtown. So we have the entire group here. I think our speakers tonight are Oscar, Natalie, and Javier, and then we have also Professor David De La Penia here behind me, who is leading them, and then a couple of the students that might chip into for that presentation. So I'll hand it over to them.
Thank you so much. Good evening, city of Vacaville. My classmates and I are here today from UC Davis, presenting our project, Revitalizing Andrews Park. My name is Natalie.
My name is Oscar.
I'm Javier.
And we are here with the rest of our group and our professor, David De La Penia. And I'm sure all of you are familiar with Andrews Park. And so today, we are presenting about revitalizing downtown through Andrews Park. So what makes a good city? How can we attract more people downtown? What elements draw people to parks? How can we create thriving communities? These were just some of the questions we asked ourselves while working on this project. Vacaville is one of many places that has the potential to become a thriving city, and we believe that is through the awakening of Andrews Park. Next slide. We have not even scratched the surface of the impacts that parks can have on the revitalization of communities. Fred Kent. This quote by Fred Kent embodies the intention of our project. We all need to connect with nature and other people in order to prosper as human beings. We want Andrews Park to meet Gell's 12 quality criteria for thriving urban spaces. These categories include opportunities to sit, relax, play, linger, and be around other people, having options for talking and connecting with others, as well as creating aesthetic and comfortable spaces. When we think of examples of flourishing urban areas around California and even the world, they all contain these 12 characteristics. So when we first visited Vacaville, we kind of got a better understanding of the area. Downtown was really pretty, but a little bit empty, stagnant, with minimal interaction between people. Vacaville City Planner Payman explained to us the new housing development plan already in motion, which is projected to bring more foot traffic to downtown. He also told us about the updated utility plan to allow for more restaurants and businesses. So we thought to ourselves, now what? It sounds like you guys already have a plan to get more people living in the area, so we wanted to tackle something new. We figured out the new residents of the housing project would want a thriving park to spend time in, which inspired a part of our project. We thought of cities with great parks, such as Golden Gate Park in San Francisco and Central Park in New York, and how these are really center points and monetary assets of the cities. Similarly, on a smaller scale, we hope Andrews Park can become that for Vacaville one day. While investing in parks might not have a direct income, studies have shown that thriving parks can increase surrounding property value, boost the mental, physical, and social health of residents, and the natural environment. Oh, during visits, or during our visits, we engaged with people downtown, enjoyed chatting with them, and overall found that people within downtown liked the historical nature and often visited specific locations. People who didn't go downtown thought that there was nothing to do there. In general, there was an overwhelming consensus that the need for more attractions, accessibility, and appeal.
So here is where Andrews Park comes in. We decided to shift our focus onto the park instead of downtown specifically, as it seemed overlooked throughout all of our research. Next slide, please. And while most people within downtown didn't see an issue with downtown itself, everyone we interviewed saw is. everyone we interviewed saw issues with Andrews Park. Next slide. So when we visited the creek ourselves, we saw how the creek was neglected with a general lack of maintenance all throughout the park. Next slide. Our focus now is on improving and enhancing the social, ecological, and cultural aspects of the park. We want to attract more people, specifically families, to make the park feel more safe. Next slide. We want to make the park a vibrant hub that offers fun activities, provides a gathering space, and allows for peaceful walks in which will turn, sorry, which in turn will allow more people to walk downtown and improve downtown's traction. Next slide. We are doing this by implementing suggestions. Next slide. Specifically, around the bridge that leads into the park, U-Lattice Creek, which runs through the park, the playground that keeps the park fun, and a community garden that will anchor the park. Next slide. Next slide. And so we want to improve the bridge above, which currently looks like this. Next slide. By creating a grand entrance into the park that welcomes and draws people in. Next slide. As well as improve the bridge underneath, which currently looks like this. Next slide. Through the addition of a mural that could highlight the diverse culture and rich history of Vacaville or the park. Next slide. We also want to touch on the creek, which currently looks like this. Next slide. By adding a creek walk path that encourages interaction with nature and promotes mental and physical health. Next slide. And restoring the creek, which currently looks like this. Next slide. By adding riparian, non-invasive plants all along the creek, and which in turn will attract more wildlife and life in general. Next slide. And we want to address the playground by adding historical elements that educates kids. Next slide. Adding more inclusive spaces for everyone. Next slide. And adding more things to do, such as possibly a basketball court and more general play space. Next slide. And we want to add a community garden for a place to gather and for a symbol of empowerment to the community. Now, you may be wondering, how will all of this be funded? We have some suggestions for this. Next slide. So here are just some of the ideas for funding and groups that the city could work with to help improve Andrews Park. This list includes a bunch of nonprofit organizations, organizations specifically found within the city, and the Winton Nation, who are indigenous inhabitants of Vacaville, along with other government agencies. This improvement project should pay for itself, with park improvements leading to more visitors, to downtown, leading to more business in general.
We were asked by our instructors to come to Vacaville and to offer a fresh take on how to elevate the downtown district. After visiting the site numerous times and engaging in conversations with locals, we identified this park as one of the district's most valuable yet underutilized assets. Our vision is to transform this underused space into a dynamic hub for Vacaville, bringing new life and energy to the heart of the city. Through our research, we discovered that parks play an incredibly important role in cities. They do not only drive economic growth by attracting visitors and businesses, but they also provide essential spaces for recreation where residents can unwind and connect with one another. Parks foster community engagement, serving as common grounds where people from all walks of life come together, share experiences, and build stronger social ties. Moreover, Andrews Park is unique in its ability and opportunity to provide ecological enhancement with U-Lattice Creek, offering green spaces that support biodiversity and improve local environmental quality. Our proposed improvements aim to harness these benefits for the city, creating a park that is vibrant, welcoming, and promotes and fosters a sustainable, connected community. We envision a place that not only enhances the aesthetic appeal of downtown, but also promotes the well-being of its residents and visitors and attracts new developers and investors. By incorporating features such as updated playgrounds, community gardens, and event spaces, we believe this park can become a central gathering point that enriches the lives of everyone in the community. We hope that the proposed improvements from our project can help create a vibrant, more brighter future for Vacaville, laying the foundation for a space that not only serves current residents, but also attracts and engages future generations, ensuring that the heart of Vacaville remains a thriving and lively center for years to come. Thank you for your attention and your consideration for our vision, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Great presentation. Thank you guys very much. Do we have any Commissioner questions? Commissioner Beaumont?
Yeah, thank you so much for that. It's always great to get young eyes on projects like this because we have been looking at it for a long time, and it's a fresh ideas that count. I do have a question for staff, maybe, maybe not for you, but I see a lot of things in downtown square that I think could belong to Andrews Park that would work just as well to revitalize, help revitalize that area of, you know, like Oktoberfest or the Corvette thing or the cook-off and things like this that are always jammed up in the parking lot at Town Square. And a lot of that, I think, could be moved to Andrews Park in a bigger, open location that I think would help put emphasis on Andrews Park a little more than it has been. Just a thought.
Commissioner Fortney?
Yeah, well done. Great presentation. Kudos to you, Professor. Nice group of bright students. I really appreciate, you know, we have a natural waterway, and anytime that we can have a natural waterway and beautify it, we need to take advantage of it. So I really appreciate that you highlighted the Andrews Park and the creek in itself. I really super appreciate that you're exploring and looking at funding options when you're looking at creating the improvements to the park. Give us a little bit more history on your community engagement, the amount of people. How much time did you actually spend in the park having those conversations? Thank you.
We went usually during the evening, afternoon, on a variety of different days and conducted, I can't give an exact number right now, but each one of us conducted about like five, at least, talking with people. I forgot the word for that. I'm so sorry. Conversations, yes, with groups, like families or individuals, a variety of different. We tried to be as diverse as possible within downtown for the conversations that we had.
Commissioner Vargas?
Great presentation, guys. It's always great to see youth, and I say youth because I'm older, right? Here, you know, setting some youthful eyes on our city. And Andrews Park is always an area that comes up in discussion. What can we do with Andrews Park? Is there anything we can do better? You know, we have Creek Walk and other events that come through. We have some businesses that have come and gone in downtown. And certainly, you know, it's been a struggle, and that's probably why you guys are here. I did take notice of some of the waterways in the creek of, I think there was someone in there fly fishing that very much entices me to the creek. But I'm curious, were there, in your discussions and conversations with individuals, aside from Andrews Park, was there any other area of downtown that people may have said, you know, take focus or light of this area in Vacaville? Or was it just Andrews Park the focus? Don't be nervous. Don't be nervous. We don't bite.
We generally stuck around downtown just because it was the scope of our project. But with everybody we talked, as we mentioned in the presentation, people generally really like the character of downtown. They like the architecture. They like the old-timey feel. So they didn't really have a problem with the sort of built environment in downtown, but they really liked, they like walking around. Some of the other issues that were called out outside of Andrews Park was a lack of foot traffic, a lack of businesses that entice foot traffic, like retail, a lot of too many offices, office spaces. But we chose to lessen our scope just to Andrews Park, just as a project, yeah.
Well, I appreciate the work. Thank you.
Commissioner Banta?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I really enjoyed how you guys kind of zoned in on the parks. I know downtown specific plan is really important to the City of Vacaville, and I think sometimes we focus a lot on like the buildings and the planning and all this stuff, and like the park, it's right there, right? And it's such a simple, small changes that you could impact, like the wellness of the whole community. And so I really like that you guys zoned in on the parks, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Do we have any further Commissioner questions? I will move on to public comment. We have no public comment. All right, so to close public comment, and let's bring it back to Commissioners to discuss and provide feedback to staff. Any comments? Leave mine. You guys did a fantastic job. This is kind of daunting, talking in front of us. You guys did awesome. And also, I'd like to acknowledge staff for coordinating this and your professor as well. I think this is great to get not only a different perspective, but a younger perspective on things. Because, I mean, to be honest, I mean, yeah, you always think about the buildings, but you don't really think about the park that's right there. So, well done, guys.
You're getting calls.
Okay, so moving on. Our next business this evening, which is to receive a presentation on inclusionary housing. We will first hear a presentation by staff, followed by Commissioner questions, and we'll open it up for public comment. May we please have the staff presentation? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening, Chairperson Rudine and Vice Chair Lightfoot and members of the Commission. My name is Kristen Pollitt. I'm the Assistant Director of Community Development. I'm going to give you a brief overview here. So earlier this year, following a competitive RFP process, the city selected the Community Planning Collaborative as our consultant to lead the process for developing an inclusionary housing program as directed by City Council. So with me this evening, I have Josh Abrams and Leo Ma, both here to present on behalf of the consultant team. And they're going to give you a presentation on this project as part of the official sort of kickoff for this work. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over.
Great. Excuse me. Great, thank you. It's nice to be here. I'm Josh Abrams. I'm a principal at Community Planning Collaborative. We're a small planning firm. We focus on housing policy. We do a lot of work with, helping cities get more ADUs, accessory dwelling units. We do a lot of community engagement, a little bit of sustainability work also. We're working today, we're talking about inclusionary housing. We do work a fair amount on inclusionary housing, both nationally in cities like Seattle and Denver, St. Paul. But more locally, smaller cities closer in size to Vacaville, like Salinas, South San Francisco, Newark. And we just actually, something that was really nice, through A-Bag, we completed five. We led a five-session training series for staff who were considering going through, who knew they were going to be leading an inclusionary housing update. So that's, it was a nice connection, and I think it helped Vacaville be prepared for this. So I'm joined here with Leo Ma with Century Urban. And I'll just say, before he introduces himself, I really like partnering with Century Urban. We've partnered on a number of different projects because they have a foot in both sides. They work some with private developers and some with the local governments, and they really understand the needs of both communities. Okay, Leo?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Leo Ma. I'm a principal with Century Urban. We're a small real estate economic advisory firm based in the Bay Area. For this assignment, and in general, we specialize and focus on financial economic analysis. We have worked with Josh on inclusionary feasibility analysis for cities such as Redwood City and South San Francisco. And we also do real estate advisory work for larger cities in the Bay Area, such as San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose. And we're honored and excited to be working on this engagement for the City of Vacaville.
Great, thank you. And there's a third partner called Farben Lutman, which I think is your current attorneys. If we need specialized help about writing the inclusionary ordinance or any of the details, we can bring them in. We have some money set aside for them as well. So the big picture with the agenda today is it's a chance to talk about inclusionary housing or inclusionary zoning and commercial impact fees before we have specifics, before we've done the research. Once we get into the results and start presenting them, sometimes it gets polarized. And it's just nice to talk about it and make sure we're all on the same page, understanding the basics before we even really dive into that work. So I'll say a few words about what is inclusionary housing? What are commercial impact fees? What is affordable housing? I'll do three real basic questions. Some of these might be old news for planning commissioners, and some people, it might be helpful. But we'll talk about the legality, what's legal? And then, will, if you have new affordable housing requirements, will that raise the cost for everyone? And then, will new requirements stop all new development? And then the last, we'll just talk a little about how it looks to develop a program if council goes that direction. So the big picture is, for background, it's been discussed for a couple of years. The City Council in 2022 approved a housing strategy that referenced it, and then there was a study session, and we're here today. The point of Phase One, as I was saying, is really to get us to that point where we know the basics, we know enough data for council, for Planning Commission to make a recommendation, and council to make a go/no-go decision. So we'll do outreach, we'll do data gathering, community engagement, and then we'll do, a lot of the effort will be on a feasibility analysis, which Leo will lead, which will really look at how much room there is to have new requirements while not adversely impacting new development. The goal of it all will be, again, to get to a point where Planning Commission and Council both feel comfortable making a decision whether or not it makes sense to go ahead and write the ordinance and have enough specifics to guide that ordinance, if that's the direction we go. And then Phase Two will be a new round of community engagement and stakeholder discussions. If there is a Phase Two drafting the ordinance, and then the guidelines are really important. There's a lot of cities that put a lot of effort into writing the ordinance and starting the program, but don't think through, what do you do once you start having these units, these affordable homes that are produced? So the guidelines will set the city up to how do you make sure those homes stay affordable for the long term, and how do you just manage the program? What is inclusionary housing? At its core, developers set aside, sell, or rent a portion of their housing units for low-income households, and they set them in at affordable rent. And then it's almost invariably, it always should be combined with some type of incentive. So it's a requirement for developers, but the goal really is to give them some incentives to do that as well. It might not offset 100% of the cost of the requirements, but at least it softens the blow. And in California, that's mostly the state density bonus law because it's a really powerful, good tool. There's other tools as well. Inclusionary zoning is not a new thing. It's been around 50 years. You see it mostly in strong-market cities. You see it clustered on the coast, but other places as well. Looking a little more locally, you see it, so if we zoomed out a little bit, you would see it almost everywhere in San Mateo, Santa Clara County. It's very common in Alameda County. And then if we look at Sonoma, Napa, and surrounding counties, it's common here, but less common. So you see a number of the cities in green that have policies, a number of them in blue that are considering it. I should just caveat, this list is in, we'll do some more vetting, make sure this list is accurate, but this is an initial cut of some of the cities around that have it. The idea here, why are cities interested in inclusionary zoning? Why is it one of the most popular programs? And the shorter answer is, it really captures the value, the real estate, the activity, the money that would be generated from that redevelopment activity and uses it to develop housing. And pretty much all of the other ways of developing affordable housing require public subsidy. This is one of the really very few ones that actually doesn't. And for that reason, it's really, it's one of the strongest and most powerful tools to get affordable housing. The other thing that's really nice is it puts that new housing in strong neighborhoods where new development is happening, where there tends to be good schools and higher safety and more amenities. On another level, the reason we're talking about inclusionary housing is because it's both in the housing strategy and in the housing element to consider the policies. And then it's an important tool to meet both arena goals generally, so those are the housing production goals, but also to look for fair housing because it spreads that housing, that new housing around, the affordable housing. Okay, so that's inclusionary. Commercial impact fees are a similar idea, similar to other fees that the city collects. It's a charge that the government It's a charge that the government collects, imposes on new development, that's generally used to reduce the impact of a new development. The theory here, the understanding, is that if new development comes in, if a new hotel or retail or any business comes in, some of those jobs are going to pay low-income wages. And the money that the local government collects, if they do a commercial impact fee from when that development is built, is to help build new housing to offset the housing need for those low-income jobs. On one level to look at, how you can think about it, so the market rate development happens, and when it happens, so it's a one-time fee, they pay a fee, that money goes into an affordable housing trust fund, like a special bank account, and then that money is used to build new affordable housing. So, depending on how much economic activity, how many new developments happen, it could sit in there months, or a year, or who knows how long, until there's enough that you could, the city could put out a request for proposals, and nonprofit developers would say, well, we can build this house, the city would say, we have this much money in our affordable housing trust fund, and nonprofit developers would come in with proposals about how much housing they could build. The city might say, we prefer this type of housing, senior housing, family housing. The city can guide it. There's some other ways, but this is, that's the most common way of a commercial, how a commercial impact fee works. One key difference, though, is before doing a commercial impact fee, you have to do what's called a Nexus study. And a Nexus study, it looks at that relationship I was talking about, Nexus's connection, that relationship between the development and the need for new housing, and it sets the maximum fee. So, it might set a fee, like the maximum you're, it's the maximum you're legally allowed to charge. So, it might set the fee, might say something that you would never charge. You could charge $200 per square foot legally and use that to go into your affordable housing trust fund. The city wouldn't set it that high, but that tells you the maximum level. The feasibility study tells you what you probably want to set it at, or what a more appropriate level is. The Nexus study is the maximum fee and also the legally required step. Okay. Make sure we're all on the same terms also with affordable housing. The idea is that people should spend about 30% of their income on housing. Some of these points, there's like, it's not, it's sometimes not exact. Sometimes there's, the state or the federal government comes up with a little adjustment factor. So, if I say 30%, and sometimes other people use 32%, or there's different assumptions. So, if you do the math and it's a little bit off, it's still right. We're just shorthand for how it goes. So, the idea is that you can spend 30% of your income on housing, and if you're spending more than that, you're, it's not affordable to you. So, if you make $100,000 a year, you can spend $30,000 on housing, divide that by 12, that's what, how much rent you could pay, or how much you could pay for your mortgage. And then about a third of households in Vacaville are cost-burdened, they're spending more than that 30%. And then, so that's, like, that's how we say, is it affordable? But then the question immediately is like, affordable for who? And we have to do just a teeny bit of math to make sure we're all on the same page. So, median income is the key concept here. And if you look at the poorest person and the richest person, the median's like that middle person. So, then when we talk about affordable housing, we're going to say 80% of median, or 50% of median. We're always going to scale down from this one person theoretically, one for a family of four, median income. So, median income here is 13,200, and then low income is 80% of that, very low income is 50%, and extremely low income is 30%. This is kind of like the vocabulary that we'll use and affordable housing developers will use. The cities have a lot of control, like, the cities might, cities might really value very low income or low income, or closer to moderate income more, and that's all fine. Those are all good discussions, but it's important to understand, like, when we talk about it, what we're talking about. And then what's kind of surprising, because the county incomes in the Bay Area, incomes are so high, when you actually do the math, oh, sorry, it's scaled down for families of one up to families of four. So, a low-income family might be between 70 and 100,000. And that could be, that could be a teacher or a household where, like, and we gave an example of an HR specialist and a part-time laborer with two kids. Like, those are working families that are, in many parts of the country, wouldn't be considered low income, but housing is so expensive here that they are considered low income. Very low income ranges from 44,000 to about 63,000, maybe a vet assistant, stay-at-home parent. And then extremely low income, it could be a student or a senior on fixed income, or also sometimes homeless or other, like, extremely, like, people that you might think of when you use that term. And it'll be important to vet these numbers more, to get really exact numbers, but as we think about a policy and who we wanted to serve, it's important to think about what the market is already serving. These are median rents in Vacaville now. It'll also be important to get more accurate numbers, because that'll really affect the feasibility analysis. So, the current city strategy for affordable housing, the city talks some about looking for city-owned sites to develop, and that's an easy way to start. The challenge is, funding is really limited, and even if there's a city-owned site, it typically takes city contribution to actually make that happen. So, that's why inclusionary zoning and the commercial impact fees are nice. The inclusionary housing doesn't actually require fees. And then the commercial impact fees, if the city goes that way, that you can start collecting money and use it to help make that happen on those city-owned sites, if that's what the city's interested in. Now, you can see just recent production. I mean, I think this just underscores how hard it is. The city's doing relatively well with a yearly target of 138 above-moderate income households, producing many times that amount. But if you look at the low and very low and moderate, it's just, it's just really hard to do without resources. Okay, I'm going to switch to the three frequently asked questions. They get progressively more complicated. The first is, is inclusionary housing legal? The answer is pretty categorically yes. There was a California State Supreme Court that found that it was legal, that it was just like any police powers that the city had. And the only way that would be overturned would be, the way that would be overturned would be a federal Supreme Court decisions, and that's not, that's not likely. So, it's fairly safe legal environment for inclusionary housing. There is a framework and a bureaucracy for it. The state says that if you require more than 15% of the units to be affordable, you may have to do a study, depending on a variety of factors. And you do have to offer at least one option to developers besides just building on-site. So, they could pay a fee to get out of it, they could do land dedication. Cities get to choose which of these they like, but you do have to offer an alternative, which is good. This is what I was talking earlier about, the need to be flexible and make it better for developers. These alternatives, they're actually best practice as well as the law. So, then are commercial impact fees legal? The answer is yes, again, pretty clearly, but you do need to do a Nexus study for the commercial fees. You don't need to do it for inclusionary housing, but for the commercial impact fees, you have to do that Nexus study. Okay, second question, will affordable housing requirements make housing too expensive to build? I think you need to understand, the key here is understanding how the market works for housing, and it's actually unlike the market for most anything else that gets produced. Pretty much everything else that gets produced, the people who produce it are the price setters, that they determine the price. So, if Apple wants to sell a new iPhone, they'll either set the price high and sell fewer units, set the price low and set more units. Basically, Apple is in charge of setting the price of their product. And that works for almost everything except for auctions and land. When it comes to land, and then basically for developers, they are price-takers. They have to, sorry, let me explain that a little more. When they're trying to decide what to sell their houses for, or what to rent, set the rents for, they're price-takers. They actually don't get to really decide how much they want to sell it for. I mean, just think about if you were selling a home and you went to your Realtor and you're like, it's been a bad year, a lot of medical bills, car bills, I want to sell it for $20,000 more. The Realtor would be like, you don't get to decide that. I'm sorry, the market will tell you what the price. You just get, you get to accept or not accept the price, but you don't get to choose it. So, they're price-takers, and that's really an important concept. So, really, developers don't have the option of pushing along prices or costs to homeowners. And then, again, that's because so much of the market is built in any time. So, if this is everything that's for sale, this is just a snapshot from Zillow, if one developer came in with some units in one place, they're not going to sell or rent if they're not comparable to everything else, all the pre-existing stock that's built. So, no, really, those prices don't get pushed along to homeowners for the most part. Developers have, they really have three options. They can build something different, they cannot build, but they can't, sorry, I feel like too much, they can't really charge people more than the market will bear. Okay, so, the last question, and this is actually the most important one and the most complicated one, will affordable housing requirements stop development? And the answer is potentially yes. If a city puts requirements that are so high on new developers, then the developers actually won't be able to build and make a profit, and they'll go back and they'll choose the don't-build option, which is, which is not the goal, because then you don't get, you don't get more housing or more affordable housing. So, to understand this, think of the, I think, that the starting price is, the sales price is determined by the market, like we were saying, say, $100 for simplicity. And then the developer, what they do when they're trying to decide whether or not to move forward, they look at what it costs to build, the construction price and the desired profit, and then whatever's left over is what they pay for land. So, in this first example, they can pay $50 for land. But in the second example, where they, where we, well, this is a commercial impact fee, where we increased their cost by $5, by charging them $5, they can now only pay $45 for land. And the feasibility analysis is going to tell us, is $45 enough to buy land? Can they still make their $10 desired profit? They're not going to settle for less. The laborers aren't going to build it for less, that Home Depot's not going to sell the wood for less. All those are fixed. So, that's going to tell us whether or not they can, they can move ahead. The same thing is with inclusionary. It's a little simpler with the impact fees, because those are dollars, but inclusionary is a requirement, a cost for developers too, in terms of lost money. So, it all, it functions the same. Got it. There we go. So, will affordable housing requirements stop development? There is that risk, that if the requirements are too high, they would stop development. That's why the best practice is to do a feasibility study and to offer incentives. And what the research shows, at least in the Bay Area, is that you don't really see, you don't really see cities with inclusionary housing or commercial impact fees having less production, because they actually are pretty good about, the cities here are pretty good about doing the feasibility analysis and offering the incentive. It's a little less clear for other parts of the country where those things are less common, but here, you really don't see it significantly impacting development. One more word about feasibility studies before we move on, because you see they're really, they're really important. But that's how the city determines what level of requirements are financially feasible for the developer. You look at data from a whole bunch of different projects, you figure out what development is likely to happen here, you look at those minimum profitability requirements, and you compare the profitability with and without the affordable housing requirements to see if that's causing it to not move, would cause it to not move forward. Okay. And then finally, just a few words on if the Council decides to move forward with a program, some of the key decisions. One of those, the first one is the percent set aside. So, is it going to be 15% of the units that have to be affordable, or 20, or 10%? The depth of affordability, so will it be for very low income, or low income, or some mix? What alternatives is the city interested in offering? And then, the rules about who it applies to, minimum project size and a variety of rules like that. Impact fees have a similar set of questions, though a little bit less. What type of development it's going to apply to, what the fee level is, and what are the alternative options if the develop, if you want to give them to developers not to pay the fee, can they build? And then what's next? So, we are, we're in Phase One, which is really the learning outreach, go, no-go decision if we move to Phase Two. That's where we would come back with an ordinance and move forward from there. And then timeline, basically, we're looking to come back in winter, probably December, to show our results and get feedback for Council, and then Council probably in January. Before that, data gathering's happening now, outreach will happen over the summer into the fall, and then we'll start to see the draft reports in the fall, going into the late fall and the summary. Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any Commissioner questions? Commissioner Belmont?
Yeah, that was great. Thank you very much. I do have one question real quick, is that you compare us to the Bay Area with impact fees not making a difference. We're not the Bay Area. You know, we need to compare ourselves to Sacramento or somewhere else, because the impact fees here are a bigger percentage than they are in the Bay Area. That's why they don't really impact the Bay Area. So, I question what we're comparing ourselves to, to see how the impact fees make a difference.
I spoke poorly. I totally agree with you. The market comparison is not Silicon Valley or something. You're right, it's the surrounding communities, right, from Sacramento to Solano County. We'll work with staff to make sure we have the right list of what communities they feel are comparable, and then Leo and his team will know the market in terms of what the rents are and what's supportable. Sorry, I spoke poorly. Your comment is totally right.
Commissioner Fortney?
Yeah, I have a gazillion questions, but I think we're still premature, early. A lot of my questions are into the weeds when we're getting into more discussion and policy. But I am intrigued, and maybe comments and questions in two lanes, and let's start with the Nexus and the commercial impact fees there. What is the cost of the Nexus, and what will the Nexus determine?
Let's see if I grabbed a Nexus study slide two. Nope, I didn't. Okay. So, the Nexus study, it's actually not, not part of the scope. It'll happen if the city moves forward with it. The budget is not huge. It's, my guess is it would be in the $20-something thousand range to do the Nexus. And the Nexus really looks at what are the jobs and what salaries do they pay, and what percent of the, percentage of those salaries are low-income salaries? So, maybe we'll say, if a new McDonald's comes in, just for simplicity, like keeping it a retail, there'll be four full-time equivalent employees, 10 full-time equivalent employees who make low-income wages. If the government really wanted to meet that need, like, provide housing for those 10 employees, what would it cost to build that housing for those 10 employees? And we'll get a number. We'll get a number of like, $300 a square foot or $100 a square foot. And that's the connection, like, that's the documentable impact from those new jobs in terms of the need for new housing. So, that's what the Nexus, that's what the Nexus determines, what the impact is, and if the city really wanted to provide affordable housing for everyone who's low-income, who works there, what would it cost? And then we'll very quickly conclude that we can't do that. That would be shooting too high, no new development would happen.
Right.
And then that's where you decide, somewhere below the legal Nexus maximum, what do you want to set it at?
And then the next question gets into more on the inclusionary housing side, and I guess that'll happen at the next conversation with Council, is, are we on a path to just acquire more housing stock at a more affordable level, or are we looking at creating a path to homeownership with generational wealth? And maybe you can talk a little bit in your expertise there on the two differences, and are we looking, are some of the vehicles deed restriction? What are some of the, what are some of the tools there?
Right. So, I'm going to answer on two levels. So, on the general market level, inclusionary housing is actually a little bit of a tool where you can play and have higher or lower requirements for rental or for ownership, or for large families or small units. You can, you can play a little bit to push the market a little bit, to nudge it in one direction or the other, if their city has goals. Or you can be agnostic and let the market produce what it wants. So, that's on the market side, like, the market rate ones. In terms of the affordable unit side, the, those are really important questions, and those will be one of the things that we consider. They think particularly, as a general rule, if the market rate development is ownership, the affordable units will be ownership, and if they're rental, they're rental. And the complex conversations happen when it's ownership. So, when you, when we, assuming the city has some ownership, low-income ownership units, there'll be a sales price initially, like $300,000 or $200, or whatever it's set at. And then the real question, what you're kind of alluding to, is when that first family sells, how much do you want to let them benefit from the increase in price? And how much do you want to preserve affordability for in perpetuity? And we have some nice models, and there's various, there's various resale formulas. Some just say, it increases, the price increases by the, by inflation, basically. So, you will, you will see some increase, but you also, you won't be able to buy it for $300,000 and sell it for a million. So, we have some tools to look at with various scenarios, how much of a nest egg those low-income family, ownership families, how much they're building versus how long affordability is preserved. And you And you can do both. I think most of the good programs, in the beginning, they didn't quite get it right, but now they do. Their goal is to preserve that affordability in perpetuity, but also let the homeowners, the low-income homeowners, be able to retire and live off their, the savings from their house.
Have you seen one be more successful than others? Is a gift and down payment assistance programs where there's no, a secondary or third mortgage accrued onto the property, where you're just given a down payment compared to deed restricted? Is there a better path, or is one better than the other in your expertise or your practices that you've seen?
It some depends on the amount of resources and your goals. Down payment assistance programs, they're popular because they're relatively easy to administer, and they support ownership. They also tie up a lot of money for a really long time with a very small number of households. So I've seen a trend away from those over time to other ones where the money gets recycled more, or you really leverage outside money, like the way we were talking about inclusionary, you're leveraging the market forces, or if you're building new affordable housing, you can leverage state and federal tax credits. The down payment one, it does have advantages. It, I don't, it's really a legitimate decision if cities like to use their money that way, but it tends not to help as many people, because the money just sits with a handful for longer.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let me see, who is next here? Commissioner Benta.
Thank you for the presentation. I had two questions. One was, I was really interested in the commercial impact fees. When you do the NEXUS study, does that apply to new commercial development or existing commercial?
So this NEXUS is only for, only for new development, and it's a one-time fee they pay for new development. There are tools to look at existing businesses and have them help pay for affordable housing, but they're a little less common. A lot of cities do use some of the hotel tax to pay for affordable housing, and some cities will have a business tax every year they apply, and sometimes they will use some of that to pay for affordable housing. But the most, and it's a little hard, because this is a one-time fee we're talking about, and the demand keeps growing. But for the most part, the most common thing is these one-time at-development fees, and that go into the pot and get used that way.
And then my second question was, when you discussed about the impact on new development, producing new homes, or new builds, what is the impact of this in other communities on building the low-income homes? Like, what does the results look like? What is the outcome?
There's no doubt that if you look at the cities that are producing affordable housing, they're almost universally, they're either going to have a commercial impact fee or an inclusionary housing requirement. There's just, there's just no other, California cities are too starved for money. There's no other way to easily make it happen. So that's by and large, I mean, it's got to be. I would be shocked if there's any city that's producing a lot of affordable housing that doesn't have one or both of those requirements.
What I'm saying, what I'm asking, I guess, is they are building the low-income housing. So like, it's, because the question was like, could this possibly slow down builds? And you're saying like, no, research is showing that it's not slowing down builds, but is it actually increasing builds for the low-income?
Yeah, so let's look at it two halves. So there's the general option, inclusionary housing. That housing gets built when the developer, they build 200 units, 20 of them are affordable. So one of the advantages of having them build onsite or perform is that those units come right away, and you have those 20 units, pretty safe. Cities that either the developer chooses, or the city encourages them, or it's the commercial one, where they're putting that money into that affordable housing trust fund, that is sometimes a concern, that that money just sits in that trust fund for a really long time and doesn't get spent. Sometimes it's legitimate, because it's like $50,000, $100,000, $200,000 will not buy you enough units, enough scale to really spend that money. So the city is legitimately just saving the money up. In other times, it's just hard, like it's a big process to get the money out the door, or there aren't enough sites for nonprofit developers to actually buy and compete for land and build. So for the, it is really nice to have money in an affordable housing trust fund, but it is sometimes, parts of it are more complex, and you do have to make sure you get the money out the door. The project I referenced in Seattle was actually helping them figure out, they were spending, taking three or four years to get the money out the door after they got it, much less like actually get the land, the units built. And the problem was, they had a requirement that they really wanted the money to be spent in the neighborhood where it was produced, and their requirements were too tight. It was like, I forget, it was just a couple blocks or something, and they couldn't, they didn't have enough sites. So they relaxed those, and they could get the money out the door more quickly. But it is something to be careful of. I'll just say, on the reverse side, if you put the money in a trust fund, and then you give it out to one nonprofit developer, you now have one developer that might have, say, 50 units. That's a lot easier for the city to manage, because they have a strong nonprofit partner, one development with 50 units. So that's an advantage of the trust fund model. The commercial impact fees, you know, you might have five units here, 10 units there, eight units there, with a whole bunch of different managers. That can be kind of complicated to administer, too. So there's pluses and minuses on both those, and it is a real concern for the impact fees, making sure that gets out the door.
Yep. And then I had one question for staff. Do we have any projects currently that could possibly utilize this?
Um, let's see, I, maybe I should defer to Erin, actually. I don't think that there are any present.
When we began conversations with the developers for the East of Leisure Town Growth Area, there's nothing written down or signed on the dotted line, but they have the general understanding that they will be incorporating an inclusionary element in their project. So it's a little bit of timing with getting this work done, and that project will be kind of happening in parallel. But that is a specific project that, you know, gross number of units around 5,000, where the developers have said that they understand and accept that they will be meeting an inclusionary requirement. What exactly that looks like, how many units, what, that's all very, very early days. But that is the one we have. I'm not aware of any others right now where that conversation, except for Lower Lagoon Valley, does have some inclusionary units that were required 30 years ago. So that's another development that's pending, where that is not in the pipeline, but it's definitely part of the requirements.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Vargas.
I'm actually retracting, he answered my question. So I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Lightfoot.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Seems like, right as you went along each slide, it answered my question, so it was like, it was perfect timing on those. Piggybacking a little bit on Commissioner Fortney, and questions about a down payment assistance, and how, you know, people are kind of going away from that. I do, I agree, I'd like to encourage homeownership and the, you know, intergenerational wealth with owning a home, and getting people into that ownership model. And I was, as I was thinking about that, on the down payment assistance programs, is there, is there a program, you said it kind of stagnates the money, you know, if it's part of that program is to repay that down payment after you sell? Is there any programs where the down payment is, gains interest, just like they would in the, sell the home at whatever rate the home was to kind of recoup that money?
Right, you could definitely structure the program like that, and then the money would grow over time. It's less valuable for the homeowners, right? Like, if we're like, hey, we're going to give you an extra $150,000 down payment, but it's going to be, it's going to, every year, you're not, you're, either you're going to have to pay off the principal, or you're going to have to pay off the mortgage, the principal or the interest. It's not so helpful for them. But there's, it's not an all or nothing. You could give it at 2% or 1%, or you could say, the interest accrues, but you don't have to pay, it's silent until you sell your house. There are ways of kind of finding, threading that needle and finding the balance.
No.
I just wanted to add, too, there seems to be some questions about homeownership opportunities, and what I've seen in some other cities with inclusionary ordinances is the use of requiring below-market rate units for sale, which restricts the sales price, but then there's still usually a small percentage that, you know, a homeowner can earn on the, on the, yeah, on the sale of the price. It's just limited and it's capped. So that's just one other model that I've seen in other cities.
Right, and I'll just, I mean, so, but let's assume that the city had a bunch of money in their housing trust fund, and they were trying to decide how to spend it. At that point, that would be like a good conversation. Do we want to have it as a down payment assistance? Or another thing you could do is you could release an RFP that says, we have $2 million in our trust fund, we're really interested in homeownership. Nonprofits come up, come to us with models that are homeownership, and maybe you'll see a land trust come in and say, say what they want to do, or other things like that. There's a bunch of policy levers the cities can, the city could pull to encourage ownership.
Thank you.
Commissioner Beaumont.
Thank you. So in addition to the builders' fees that they have paid to the school district, this would be an impact fee that would be paid to a trust fund. And where the builders' fees go to the school district, they're not enough to cover the price of building a school. And so they have to issue bonds. And so I'm afraid, even though I love this program, that the impact fees would take so long to build up to be able to do anything with it, that it would be a program that you'd be tearing your hair out trying to build up over time, that it would just be frustrating, because you have the needs, but you don't have enough money.
We could do a little bit of analysis based on trends and pipeline, and give you a little bit of data when we come back, that says, if you did this fee and development continued at this pace, you'd have this much money in a couple of years, and that would get you this many of units, you could get this many units. We could, I think that's a really, it's a legitimate question, and we could help answer that with data.
And I'll actually add, too, I've seen a lot of builders in other communities where they're building homes in large master plan communities. Typically, they actually like, they prefer to build the units onsite rather than paying the in-loo fee, because it just makes more sense for them from a cost perspective. So like Josh was saying, there, we can definitely build in different options into the ordinance with different policy levers to guide what the city wants.
Okay, my turn. I have a question about the in-loo fees. So I'm, I'm originally from the South Bay, where there's, you know, there's a lot of cities down there who have had this for a while, and I've seen where it's either, say, 10% of the units, or the in-loo fee would be 15%, or it could be 15%, and the in-loo fee 20%. Has there been any laws that has changed that? Can you still have a higher number required for the in-loo fee than actual units built?
Right, no, you still can, you still can require that, and it's probably a best practice. Like, all things considered, let the developer build that unit, get it a couple of years sooner, don't have to sit on the money and wait to RFP it out. Don't, let the developer do it, so, and do it where, don't have to fuss, are there enough sites? So all things considered, like as a starting spot, unless it's, unless there's like a reason not to, a lot of cities are, want the, want the units, like the performance option. And then what they'll say is, if you don't want that, then we're going to want enough, collect enough money to build two units for every dollar. If you're going to fee out, if you're going to pay us to get out of your requirement, we're going to either be able to have those units much more affordable, or have twice as many units. I think that's a best practice to, it used to be the opposite. It used to be too easy to fee out, and now a lot of the cities get that, and they set that requirement higher. So you'll get more, usually, you get more if the developer fees out.
So you said with 15%, if you have more than 15% of the units, you need a feasibility study, correct?
Yes and no. There's a couple of benchmarks. Above 15% and not producing enough market rate housing, and you are producing enough market rate housing. And so I don't, I don't actually think, you'd have to, I think we'd have to look back a couple of years, but most likely, you don't even need it. The state's allowed to require it, they're allowed to request it, but I don't even think, I suspect you guys wouldn't even, well, you're getting a feasibility study, so it doesn't matter, but I don't even think you would, that AB 1505, or whatever the law is, I don't even think you'd hit all the benchmarks, so it wouldn't apply.
Is there a cap for the in-loo fee? I mean, can you require 50%? I mean, just, they're a crazy number out there.
The in-loo fees are an op, so we're not talking commercial impact fees, we're talking the alternative for inclusionary.
Correct.
That's an option. So you can charge whatever you want, to give them that option. If you put it too high, you'll push everyone to build, which maybe is what you want, which is okay.
Right, yeah.
Or if you push it too low, everyone will fee out. But no, there's no legal requirements. Because it's an alternative, you can set it, you can set it at what you want.
Great, thank you. Okay, I will move on to public comment. Public comment? No public comment. I will close public comment. And bring it back to the commission to discuss and provide feedback to staff. We're good? All right? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on this evening, we are on to director's report. Director Morris, please proceed.
Thank you very much. My slides are being pulled up, and I'll get going as soon as they're on the screen. I want to get something important. Pressure, Beaumont.
Computer.
Okay, so let's just dive right into the next slide. So since the last planning commission meeting, the council has considered a variety of topics. On April 9th, I believe it was, or 6th, they initiated the East of Leisure Town Road General Plan Amendment. We anticipated bringing the Northeast Growth Area to the same meeting, but that's been pushed off a bit to allow us to do further work with the county. So one growth area initiated, and then also in April, the subsequent meeting, the council considered whether or not to initiate a general plan amendment to amend the city's ridgeline policies, to allow a home to be placed on top of a ridge in the Vintry Estates project. And the council declined to initiate the general plan amendment, so that project is currently being redesigned to meet the city's standards. I mean, it's not coming to you immediately, but we are working on getting it back in and getting it to planning commission at a later date. And then in May, the council considered a battery storage moratorium. They didn't just consider it, they actually adopted it as an urgency ordinance, that's now in place, so we are not accepting applications for battery storage. We will be going back to council in June to articulate the city's work and looking at this further, and likely be recommending a longer moratorium, to give time to develop an ordinance. I think it's important, our current ordinance does not allow battery storage anyway, but we are making sure that they don't come in here, until we have better regulations. In May, actually, it was just last week, the council heard a similar presentation to this one you received this evening. They had less questions. This is actually a really rich discussion, so thank you all. I think it was really helpful for everyone. And then it was presented to them at the last council meeting as part of the budget process, to allocate some city funding to the Northeast Growth Area, which would be, as recommended by staff, $375,000. And the goal would be to start doing land planning concepts for that area, and some infrastructure concepts, so that we can ensure that everything that happens in the East of Leisure Town is setting us up well for the Northeast Growth Area. So more on that as it goes back to council as part of this year's budget package. I'll go to the next slide. So we know that we're trying to bring you the commission items over the next few months. It's a little light, but don't worry, we have been getting some new applications. So right now, you can expect a general plan amendment in June, that'd be the U-Banks and Cotting Lane General Plan Amendments. In July of 20, of July of this year, we've got the Jepson Center, it's a new commercial development coming to the commission for action. And then we're tentatively thinking we may have Vintry Estates back to you in August with a revised design, but we're waiting to see them resubmit. For the next one, the building division has actually, activity has picked up, and a lot of the activity will start to really show itself when you see your May and your June. We have a lot of production homes starting right now, a lot more than we expected. It's actually a little bit overwhelming, because we have other things in the shoot, too. But overall, we've had an uptick when we compare year to year in all categories except for solar permits. And our fee collection is also up, so it's a good thing for our department. And our inspection activity is also up. So here's an activity trend showing how many building permits have been issued to date. And we're going to go to the next slide. This shows you that our inspection activity is also up, it's trending up, and I think that May is going to continue to show that growth. And we'll go to the next slide. This shows that we continue to have sort of trend lines on solar permits relative to building permits, although a little less solar permits while building permits are rising. So we'll continue to present this to see if that changes with some home production ramping up. Let's go to the next slide. This is where I'll turn it over to Planning Manager Bevind to give the monthly report.
Thank you. Probably the most exciting part of the night. So District 1, we approved a Clean Natural Gas fueling station. This is for the station where it has a burning slash Chevron Station on Cotting. So that was approved. District 2 received a number of new applications that we've identified there, and also in the staff report. staff report. And we approved a new set of house plans for Roberts Ranch Village D. District 3, we approved the Allison Apartments time extension, which was an affordable apartment project that was approved a couple of years ago for 135 units. And they came before time extension, so that was approved. District 4, no new applications or approvals, just building permits. District 5, we had a new, a number of new applications as well, as I noted there. We're seeing a lot more activity in Lower Lagoon Valley, both house plans and welcome center, temporary fire station. A lot of that stuff is now picking up in permit phase. So there is, we've seen some activity there coming into summer, which is pretty exciting. And then District 6, we approved again some house plans and a time extension for Vanninggate project. So those are the current planning items. Advanced planning, Director Morris went over a couple of these. In terms of housing element related tasks, which will be some of our focus the rest of the year, the housing element required staff to meet with the development community once a quarter to have discussions on how to build different types of units, affordable units that the city's looking for. We had a couple of meetings so far this year. We've identified a couple of tentative dates for the rest of the year in July and October to continue those discussions with the development community on how we can, again, provide different types of housing or affordable housing units. Allison Priority Development Area Specific Plan, we've selected ESA to perform that specific plan, prepare the specific plan. We are anticipating wrapping up the contract here soon. Then we'll move on. We've already started our meetings with ESA to go over that. Inclusionary housing, you heard the presentation, that's all done and we're meeting regularly with them as well. In terms of growth areas, this is also mentioned that the council approved the GPA for the East of Leisure Town and hopefully sometime '24 will go back for the Northeast Growth Area.
I'll take it from here. Just a few announcements, and I have one that's on this slide. As part of implementing the downtown specific plan and frankly, dealing with some of these older buildings downtown that were never seismicly retrofitted, we are putting in a grant application with CalOES. This is going to council next week to authorize it. But essentially, it would provide up to 3/4 of a million dollars that could be granted to local property owners downtown, the 12 or 11 or 12 unreinforced masonry buildings. It would be a source to give them funds to help them retrofit those buildings so that those buildings could be brought into some more exciting uses or just stabilized as they are. There's options. So hopefully, council will authorize it. The deadline's right after that and we did get through the first round, so we're very hopeful that we might get this awarded. And then the other thing with downtown is we're having the Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel. The ULI fellows will be in downtown Vacaville on August 12th and 13th. And their mission is, again, going to the unreinforced masonry buildings to really look at our buildings, like look at them in person and up close and make some recommendations for cost-effective and efficient ways that property owners can upgrade their buildings to bring in new tenants. This is a stellar group of folks. They've assigned a chair, a co-chair that's just a thought leader in urban redevelopment and in development of downtowns. She's just a published author on this topic and has tremendous experience, so we're just very excited. So I'll put that on your calendar. They're going to present to council on August 13th after they come to Vacaville on Sunday night, spend all day Monday in downtown, talking to people and seeing things. All day Tuesday, they put together their recommendations and then Tuesday night, they present their findings to council. So mark your calendar, it should be fun. The thing that's not on here is that Lower Lagoon Valley have officially broken ground out there with residential housing units. Lilac Ridge is under construction. This is Lennar's first community of several out there. Really momentous event. Also behind the scenes, as our planning manager mentioned, we're cranking on permits for a temporary fire station. We approved a temporary water source. We have been reviewing house plans and designs. So Lower Lagoon Valley is not just keeping us busy behind the scenes, but there's actually vertical activity happening at the site, which is good. And then staffing updates, we continue to have some vacancies in planning. We're still working on filling those. If you know anyone that has some planning experience, would like to come work for the city of Vacaville, just tell them to apply. There's multiple roles at multiple levels. On the building side, we're only down one position right now. So one of our building inspectors was actually kind of important during the summertime and we're totally mobilizing on filling that as soon as possible. That's what I had, I think it was it, right, Paimon? Yes. Okay. That concludes my presentation.
Curious, how many URM buildings need to be resolved?
There were, somewhere in the high 20s, I think. And then they, some of them were fixed. So there's, I think, 11 or 12. There's one that's sort of in the middle. And it's a lot of the buildings, they're pretty much all on Main Street. And they're, some of them are contiguous with each other and some of them aren't. But we have a very high concentration compared to cities of our size all over California.
Yeah, I have some experience with this. That's why I was curious. So great. Well, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to commissioner comments. Now it's time for commissioner comments. This portion of the agenda is for commissioners to inform each other of items of potential interest to other commissioners, such as interagency meetings or offer announcements as appropriate. Okay, I'll go down the line. Commissioner Fortney. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Beaumont.
No, I'm good. No additional comments.
Okay. Commissioner Vargas.
Great presentation from staff today. My apologies for being absent last meeting. Don't forget this weekend fiestas, as Commissioner Fortney reminded me today. So parade on Saturday, no carnival, I think, which is kind of sad. But nonetheless, looking forward to the overall community of Vacaville, again, coming together for fiestas. It's always fun. So that's it.
Vice Chair Lightfoot, and I apologize if I didn't call you vice chair.
No worries. So no, I just want to say, welcome back, Commissioner Beaumont. It's a pleasure to serve with you again. I'm excited to have you here. And that's, that's all I got. Yep.
Commissioner Banta?
I just wanted to note that I attended the Vacaville People's Forum BU event at the end of April. And it, talking about the park presentation, it was another great opportunity to see how our parks can be utilized for community events and for accessibility for all youth. And so that was a really great event that they put on.
Commissioner Beaumont.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for welcoming me up here in spite of my first vote. So I do have two questions for Director Erin Morris. There happened two years ago when I was up here, they had a couple of projects that I haven't heard about since, and that's the Orchard Montevista Apartments and the Allison Apartments next to the hub. Are those still progressing? I haven't seen anything about them.
The permit for Allison was just extended to give the developer more time to find funding. And the other affordable housing project is also still seeking funding. So it's still a valid entitlement. It does sometimes take years to find funding, but neither one has been abandoned. It's just a matter of locating the funding to make those projects a reality.
I, I don't have anything District 6 related. However, last week I went on a field trip with my daughter's class and we went to an animal rescue here in Vacaville called Funky Chicken, Funky Chicken Animal Rescue, I think is what it's called. It is great. Didn't know anything about it beforehand, before the field trip. And it's, she has taken in all kinds of animals. They are on Instagram. It's IamFunkyChicken. And they rely very heavily on generous donations as well as volunteer hours. So if there's high school students that are looking for volunteer hours, it is a place that, you know, you can volunteer. So I just wanted to just, you know, say that during our meeting, that it was, it's a fantastic place and the people who run it are awesome. So that's all I have. So, and also, thank you very much for the nomination and for the votes. And I hope to, I hope to serve you proud as your new chair. So with that, we have reached the end of our meeting. And as a reminder, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, June 18th. Thank you and good night, Vacaville.